Meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May 13th. First of all, let me start by saying it is great to see everybody's face. I know that this is still unusual times that we live in and doing the meeting virtually, but thank you to your commitment to the community and everything that you're doing. Let's go ahead, and I would like to ask for Commissioner Curtis Richardson to provide the invocation today and immediately afterwards, if we say the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But all bow your heads with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for waking us up this morning, God, and blessing us with a reasonable portion of health and strength. We thank you, God, for another day of living and the opportunity to witness your creation here on earth. We ask, God, that you would bless each and every one that is participating in this meeting this afternoon. Bless us and keep us, dear Lord. Bless our families and allow us to make decisions that are of good judgment, that reflect wisdom and discernment, are in the best interest of the citizens of our community. God, we ask your continued blessings upon each one that is represented here in our families. Lord, bless this wonderful community that we live in, this all-America city that we call Tallahassee. Give us the opportunity to make it even better in the days and weeks and years and months to come. Father God, we ask that you would help us through these difficult times that we are experiencing now, God. We know that you are in control and that you will bring us through if we would just pray and humble ourselves before you, dear God. We ask that you would continue to bless and keep us, and we ask this prayer in your Son Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Which is one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Commissioner Richardson, thank you so much. That was a wonderful way to start the meeting. Certainly do appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Item 7.02 has been deleted from your material, and that item is no longer necessary. Items 9.02 and 9.03 involving appointments or reappointments to city committees, that has been added to your meeting material. An attachment has been added to item 13.03. That attachment is a letter of support for that item from Holy Comforter School. And finally, an attachment has been added to 9.02, which is the application of resume of Mr. William Cole.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions regarding the agenda modifications? Seeing none, we will move forward. We do not have any presentations before the City Commission today. Citizen input on agenda items, Mr. Cook will walk us through that on each agenda item as we discuss. We do not have any appearances before the City Commission by other boards, committees, or other governments. Am I correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Excellent. We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Who accepts other consent agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem properly moves consent agenda, seconded, I saw by Commissioner Richardson and I heard by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Mayor, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You do have comments. I wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Jim, I appreciate it, and I'm sorry. How many comments do we have for the consent agenda and for which items?
Mayor, we had 29 comments, all of them on item 7.05. Those were received and distributed to each of you in advance, as well as posted to the Board Doc's agenda that the public has access to. I will also note that we received two additional comments after that distribution and posting. Those comments won't be distributed to you individually, but they will be made part of the permanent record for this meeting.
Okay. Going back, motion on the table for the consent agenda that's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We are now on number 9.01. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves your, the mayor and commissioners nomination of one of you to serve on the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors for the 10 most populous cities in Florida. Mayor Daley has previously served in this capacity for the last year, and it is now due for reappointment. We're seeking your direction on this matter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to offer the motion that you continue to serve, as you have an interest in doing so, and you've done an outstanding job this past year, and I think that we should continue to allow you to have that fun each year, I mean, for this year. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much, and I humbly do accept their responsibility. I do love the League of Cities. They do great work, and I'm proud to represent you on that board. Thank you so much. Mr. Cook, is there any public comment on this item, by the way?
No, sir.
Excellent. There's a motion on the table by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Thank you all so much for entrusting me with this responsibility. I certainly appreciate it. It passes unanimously. Item number 9.02. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jim. I'll present this item and the next one.
I certainly apologize. Man, I'm a little rusty today, Mr. Cook. I apologize. Please move, please move forward.
That's all right. We get the business done one way or the other, right?
Yes, sir.
The item 9.02 is appointment of two individuals to your Special Events Advisory Committee. As you know, that group provides advisory support on issues for the commission and Parks and Rec and Neighborhood Affairs related to special events on property owned or controlled by the city and events co-sponsored by the city. Each of you, as an elected official, appoints an individual. What you have tonight is Mayor Daley's appointee and Commissioner Richardson's appointee before you. Obviously, each of you appoints your own, but as we initiated this committee and the appointments with this commission, you did ask that, even though they're individually appointed, that they be brought forward to you. So we have those two individuals to be appointed.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson, since one of them is your appointment, any comment? Or you good with staff recommendation?
I would move staff recommendation on those two appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. And I will second as well. Is there any further comment? Motion has been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by myself, the mayor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Cook, we're on item number 9.03, please.
9.03 is also appointment to the committee or a board. The municipal code enforcement board has two individuals whose terms are expiring. They're eligible for reappointment and are recommended by staff for reappointment. Those individuals are identified in the agenda item. Also, you have, as with the previous item, the member makeup is also an attachment. So staff recommends approval of those two individuals for reappointment.
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Okay. Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Passes unanimously, five zero. That concludes action under City Commission. We're on item number 10.01. We have nothing listed. Ms. Jackson, do we have any introduction of ordinances today? There we go.
No, we do not. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We are on policy formation and direction. Item 11.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We have a, staff has a PowerPoint presentation we would like to show on this. I will provide some introductory comments, and then Wayne Tetter, Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter, will provide the presentation. But you'll recall, and I believe it was Commissioner Richardson, in January, we discussed the matter of very limited cemetery space, left into cities cemeteries. We have five that we own. We operate six in total with more than 40,000 burial plots, but frankly, we are running near the end of our inventory. And so staff has reviewed the matter, conducted a market analysis to see what burial plots are available in our community, and generally explored ways that we might could add capacity in the city's cemeteries. I've been quite pleased with the effort of our cemetery experts, with their creativity, because it's not been an easy thing. Space is very limited in the city, and I think we've got a couple recommendations that you will find attractive. But I would like to give an overview. I think it's helpful to you and the public to understand where we find ourselves in this particular sector. And so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Tetter to do the presentation.
Excellent. Wayne, thank you for joining.
Yes, sir. I'm going to go ahead and load the screen real quick. Can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So Mayor and Commissioners, our community has really nine cemeteries that serve the majority of our needs for our community. Even though there's 170 public and private cemeteries, these are the ones on the screen that serve our community the most. Five of those, as the city manager indicated, those are in the light yellow color, are the ones that are owned by the city. The ones in the gray boxes are the private cemeteries that includes Tallahassee Memory Gardens on North Monroe, Meadowwood Cemetery, and Clifford Hill Cemetery out on the east side of town. The last remaining public cemetery that we have is the most recent, is the Tallahassee National Cemetery on the west, east side of Tallahassee. The National Cemetery provides burials for military and their members of their family. As the city manager indicated, we have only 50 remaining burial plots for sale with all the cemeteries that we have from the city of Tallahassee. And those 50 are individual plots that are located in the city's south side cemetery. As the city manager indicated too, in our agenda materials, we have approximately 9,500 unused lots in our existing cemetery space. And one of our recommendations is to, just quite frankly, to go back and look at those that are unused and see if there's an opportunity to put those back in the hands of our citizens or our community for use in the future. So the recommendation is to go and seek a buyout for those lots that are viable to serve our citizens. We actually, in an effort to try to determine the needs for our community looking forward, we used a study that was completed by the National Funeral Directors Association, and they pointed out exactly what our local cemetery providers are. They're saying to us is that cremation trends are increasing, traditional burial trends are decreasing. What we'd like to talk about today is really the five-year window that we have in this box is from now until 2025, and we think our recommendations that we have will accommodate our needs up to that period of time. Just to give you a little bit of background on the trends of how cremations are, where we have these things located, really, you've got about 35% of cremations that will be scheduled for burial in a cemetery. 8% would be in columbariums. That's a facility that remains or stored on a site. But there's a large portion of cremains that will not be in a traditional burial location. If you look long-term, what we have for trends, looking in our community, we basically have some trends downward. You see the projector burials. That's the kind of maroon-colored properties chart. Those are traditional barrels. You're going to see a decrease in time, and then you're going to see non-cemetery cremains increase over time as well in 40 years. When we looked at options, we did consider, in our agenda materials, we talked about creating a new cemetery. Several years back, the city of Tallahassee put out an RFP. We got back a couple proposals. Those proposals were quite frankly, they were quite too expensive for us to proceed moving forward with. We do own a large area of cemetery land out in the Walani property, but one of the major constraints on that one is getting access to the property in the near future. So we did take a look at our south side cemetery. This seemed to be the very most appropriate site to discuss a potential expansion. If you notice the shaded area, that is about three acres of land. We anticipate that you can accommodate about 3,000 plots on that three acres of land. So that's a pretty significant increase, and that area alone would address the concern that we're talking about in the next five years. Now, one of the things that I point out on this map is there are some environmental features out on the airport property we need to be considered of. So I've kind of had a larger boxed-in area that will be our study area, and so this would allow us to, this option to study that area and determine the right location. So at the end of the day, the location might be a little bit different, or the boundaries might be a little bit different than what we're showing on this. We believe this is a cost-efficient approach. Again, it will provide up to 3,000 burial plots, and we believe we could have these spaces available to our public within a year fairly easily. Because of that north end property, you can kind of see the round circle on that property. That's the National Weather Doppler site. They are leasing about half of that blocked area. We would have to renegotiate a lease with them to modify their lease boundaries. Our airport director has contacted them, and they are amenable to modifying their boundaries. So with that, Commissioners, our recommendation to you is to move us forward with creating the expansion of this cemetery on the south side and moving forward with a gravespace buyback program. And that, the buyback program's going to take quite a bit of time, because we really need to go look at individual plots that are available, see if they can actually accommodate use in the future. And so both of those would be funded through our perpetual care trust fund for cemeteries. We do have Robert Culver House and Stacy Campbell, who has done a large portion of the research for this, but answer any questions if you have it. I would ask Commissioners, if you include the options that are recommended to you, that it also include the ability, if we have to procure design and construction services, that it would include those opportunities so that we can exponentially move forward with the options. And with that, I will close the PowerPoint unless someone needs to view a piece of that slide.
Thank you, Wayne. Yeah, if we can go back to the, there we go. Perfect. Wayne, just to clarify as well, what you're looking for, if it's the will of this commission, is staff's recommendation as amended to include the procurement measure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do not have comment on this item.
Okay. I will spare all of you my silly jokes on this item, and we'll just go straight to the question.
I think we're dying to share those with us, right?
I know you're dying to jump in on the discussion right now, but now we can be professional and move forward. Good job on this project, Wayne. We certainly do appreciate it. Any comment?
Yeah, just one question.
Sure. Jeremy, excuse me, Commissioner Matlow, I apologize.
No problem. Hey, Wayne, what's the fiscal impact on expanding the cemetery versus the individual buybacks? Or do we know what the price would be per lot on the buyback?
No, we do not, Commissioner. That's why I said it's going to take a little bit of time to first off, see what's available, see how long it's been in stock. It could be something that we negotiate a fair market price based on when they purchased the lot. There may be an escalator value, so we really just need to kind of dig into that option a little bit more, see what's available. And if we need to bring back any updates to you, we will be glad to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I would just like, be interested in seeing the numbers when you start getting something.
Fair question.
Yeah, good question.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I raised this issue because my neighbor is Lynnanne Griffin, one of the owners of Strong and Jones Funeral Home, and she stopped me one day and brought this matter to my attention in the neighborhood. And so, and it was interesting because shortly after I had spoken to her, a member of my church called and said that she had a friend that was distraught because she could not find a burial plot that was affordable in one of the city cemeteries that she could bury her son who had recently died. And so that's why, you know, I brought this issue to the commission, to the city manager, and asked us to look into it. I think that Wayne and staff have done a phenomenal job and have brought back some very reasonable recommendations for us to take a look at. I understand what the research suggests. I, you know, I'm not in a position to question that, other than to say I know in the African-American community, and other Commissioners can correct me if they think I'm wrong, but I do not think that cremation is very popular at this point in the African-American community and maybe in some of the other minority communities as well. But I think we're moving in the right direction, and I would like to make a motion that we give the city manager and staff direction to move forward and bring us back information on what would be the most viable option for us. And Commissioner Matlow, thank you for bringing up the issue of the fiscal impact, because we certainly want to have that information to make our final decision as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before a clarification on the motion?
Yeah, I was going there as well. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. The point of clarification is there's a recommended action, options one through three, that I want to make sure that Commissioner Richardson, in his motion, that is what he's saying, that he's recommended. Are you recommending something else?
No, no. What staff has recommended in the, in the staff recommendation.
Okay, well, I second that motion there.
Okay. The motion on the table by Commissioner Richardson is for staff's recommendation as amended to include the procurement options that Mr. Tetter mentioned in the data that you and Commissioner Matlow have asked for as well, which I think is a very good point to bring back. It's been seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion on the motion on the table? Let me just say, Mr. Manager, on a personal note, I have, my father is buried in one of our public cemeteries, and I am always impressed on how well-maintained our cemeteries are. And I think that brings great comfort to people here in Tallahassee that have relatives that are buried there, and I appreciate that. Without any further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those oppose? Passes unanimously. We're on item 11.02. Madam Attorney?
And we'll have, sorry, am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll give, if you have further detailed questions, we'll give staff an opportunity to provide those answers. This item, item number 11.02, seeks approval of the amended and restated Canopy Inclusionary Housing Agreement. The city's inclusionary housing ordinance is designed to encourage private sector to provide affordable housing in large-scale developments. The ordinance applies to residential developments with 50 or more units that are located in census tracts where the average median income, AMI, is greater than the overall AMI for the city. Developments subject to the ordinance must provide 10% of the units in the development as inclusionary housing. The ordinance also provides incentives for developers that provide inclusionary housing. The Canopy Development, which is currently under development and in active construction, is subject to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. On April 25, 2018, the City Commission approved an inclusionary housing agreement with Canopy developers, Oxbottom Mortgage Holdings LLC. An amendment to the Canopy Inclusionary Housing Agreement is proposed to reflect certain land use changes in the development and to promote the ownership of units by eligible households. The proposed amendment includes the following: increase in the number of inclusionary housing units to 67, reflecting revisions to the PUD, relocation of certain inclusionary housing units with the Canopy Development, payment of realtor fees from the sales price of the units, these are to be paid by the developer, payment of buyer's closing costs in the amount of 3% of the sales price of the unit, this also to be provided by the developer, annual adjustments to the sales price controls, increase in the pool of eligible buyers to households up to 100% of the area median income, price and ownership restrictions on the units for seven years from the date of sale to an eligible buyer. This is a change from 15 years. Also, the restart of the clock for the city to purchase unsold inclusionary housing units, with the city having no obligation to purchase before June 1, 2021. And finally, the elimination of the posting of the bond. So with that, I'll see if the clerk has any comments.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We had five comments received on this item. Again, all received prior to the distribution cutoff, so all of them were distributed to you. I will point out that the fifth of the five comments appears to relate to item 1104. Their items are submitted with the item number, so we don't want to move them from where they were submitted, but that one makes reference to the Community Leadership Academy, which is part of your item 1104. But total of five, and I believe four were on point for this particular item.
Excellent. All right. Ms. Jackson, anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
Excellent. All right, let's open it up for discussion. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Matlow?
I'm in favor of most of it. I want to be in favor of moving the eligible AMI to 100%. As we develop new communities, I think it's important to make sure we're sticking to the income diversity. We want to see new developments and make sure we don't make the mistakes of the past where we continue to separate each other. I would rather see the city end up buying a piece of property and making it available to low-income residents than to actually adjust the AMI for eligible buyers.
Point well taken. Any other Commissioners? Any comments in discussion?
Can I hear a response to what Commissioner Matlow just mentioned? What would that mean for this item if we did that?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Jackson, would you like to comment?
And you can have staff speak more specifically about the AMI, but generally, we're trying to increase the opportunity for folks to be able to purchase the property. We've had difficulty in having folks who are able to satisfy their previous requirements that we had, and we thought by moving to 100% of AMI, we'd have more of an opportunity to get workforce housing actually established in this area.
And Madam Attorney?
Yes.
For the sake of our public who's listening, can you tell them what AMI is?
Area median income?
Average.
Is the difficulty finding purchasers, oh, I'm sorry, is the difficulty finding purchasers based on the income level and the affordability of the properties? I'm trying to see the disconnect between, are we thinking that there aren't buyers who make 80% or below that can either afford to this? Can they get into this? What are the barriers preventing that we need to open it up to larger income levels?
I can let, I can have Abena or someone else speak more specifically, but I think in general, in working with the developer and the city, we were trying to come up with whatever criteria that we could, which would assist in getting workforce housing developed and actually people in those properties. But I will let Abena provide any additional comment or someone from the city manager staff if she has more specifics.
Sure. May I? You can, okay. You're actually, your ordinance does give you the ability to set your eligible residents at 100% AMI. So that range is already in existence, and the original agreement with Canopy also specified up to 100. There were discussions to increase that, but we maintained it at 100%. So there's that range. It doesn't mean you have to make 100%, but if somebody comes in at 70%, we have different programs at every level to encourage somebody to be able to afford it, and the different levels of subsidy that would apply depending on the individual's requirement. So this doesn't limit it to only 100. It maintains. 100. It maintains.
I think we lost Abena.
Mr. Mayor, let me fill in just a little bit on that. I know where she was going with this. In terms of not limiting, of course, we're going to strongly encourage those that are less than 100% of AMI. But what we found over the last year, it was a two-part equation. It was not just the affordability of the mortgage itself, kind of, you know, the monthly payment, but also the ability to get in on the required down payment. These buyers are just like any other home buyers. They take out a mortgage, there's a required down payment, there's fees associated with it, and we've been working to find ways to couple our other programs with down payment assistance so that that piece could be afforded. That seems to be a really big hurdle. I think we can all appreciate that, the amount of money down to buy a house. So at 100% of AMI, we can align the down payment assistance programs that we have available to us, as well as the mortgage affordability, and still clearly target workforce housing. These homes are beautiful homes, they're in a beautiful neighborhood, they're approaching $200,000. They're not inexpensive, but they are well below market value. And so just trying to meet all of those items and match them together in terms of down payment, mortgage affordability, and making sure we've got an adequate buying tool. That's ultimately how the staff reached that recommendation.
Based on Commissioner Matlow's comments, we do have the flexibility of 100% AMI.
That's the recommended action, and I think that would be 100% of AMI for the qualified buyers, which also aligns our ability to use other down payment assistance programs that we have. So we'd be marrying, it would give us the maximum flexibility to get buyers in these homes. And so the recommended action is to go to 100%, up to 100% of AMI. They don't have to make that, but they could qualify if they did.
And Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor, I would just bring to-
Sure, Commissioner Richardson.
That as of, and correct me, staff, if I'm wrong, or city manager, we only have one of those homes occupied at this point. It has been very difficult to, I've talked to the staff at the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, they agree it's been difficult to get qualified buyers for those homes. And so I think this gives us some flexibility in terms of increasing the workforce housing in Canopy and actually getting people in the housing.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Richardson, thank you for that question, because we've been very reticent to change the rules of this program. It's been in place, the homes, I believe there are now four homes that have been constructed, one has been sold. We wanted to make sure we can construct homes and make them available for people to get into. But we've tested it. This is our first application of inclusionary housing, of our inclusionary housing ordinance, which, by the way, has withstood state legislation, and we believe it to be fair. But that was a big constraint, just getting individuals and families qualified. And so we were very, very reluctant to change it, but we think that was a critical barrier in terms of the percentage of AMI.
Commissioner Bryant, I'm sorry, Commissioner Richardson, any follow-up, or was that?
I just, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, for supplementing my comments.
Sure. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me add on to the fact that it is critical that we actually sell some inclusionary housing, and that we have, we have opportunities, so let's not not take advantage of it. And I too want to commend the staff for looking for options. I think that's probably one of the first questions I asked when I actually understood that we had only one family that had received the opportunity to stay in the inclusionary housing out in Canopy. So if this brings us more opportunity to get folks qualified and into those homes, I think it's something we definitely should move forward with. And then if it doesn't work, that's when you come back and you look again. But for right now, let's move ahead. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem, yes, ma'am.
I think it's also important for the listening public to know that with this inclusionary housing, it is a direct impact on helping to eliminate poverty, because what it does is it gives an opportunity for someone to go into the home and have equity in the home, because the home is valued at more than it's being sold for. And so there's an immediate opportunity to have a chance at a little wealth. And we know that, you know, your home is where your biggest investment usually is. And so I think that that's a good thing for our community. And as I understand it correctly, this would also take us from a commitment of 65 units to 67 units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that means that we have 66 more to go. We only have one occupied, so there's 66 opportunities for someone to acquire some almost immediate wealth if you're able to get the assistance needed to be included in the inclusionary housing.
Right, right.
And with that, I would want, if there are no other comments, I would like to move staff recommendation.
Second.
The mayor, Protem, has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. My comments, Curtis, I want to thank you. You are the only commissioner on this commission that served in 2018, that created this program specifically for Walani. I want you to know that it stands to a testament to your commitment of affordable housing. I hope, and I think that you agree, that the slight modifications that the staff is recommending, and I think we all endorse, will only help the original idea that you were part of with the previous commission of putting in place, and I think we're going to be able to move forward. So thank you for your leadership on this issue, and you were the only one that voted previously, and will have the opportunity to vote today as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. With that in line, seeing no further comments. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
It passes. I'm sorry?
No.
It passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We are on item number 11.03.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll introduce this item. This recommends the approval of proposed amendments to your city commission policy 136 dealing with real estate management. Over the last number of months, staff has worked with the allowance of Tallahassee neighborhoods, otherwise known as ETN, to discuss a number of policy initiatives and recommendations. This one in particular involving the potential sale of land owned by the city. The group of ATN now chaired by Carrie Litherland, I believe Mr. Brazin was the chair at the time for much of this discussion, but the group largely was at the table, asking to make sure the city would not dispose of land that otherwise would be previously considered a park or open space and things of that nature. And so we were very deliberate in conversation and thought, and we felt almost immediately our intent was aligned. And so Wayne Tetter and our real estate staff, they spent a lot of time making sure that the recommended actions would not result in unintended consequences, but would support the discussions we had with ATN. I feel comfortable that we got there. I'm going to point out some of the changes, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure they're clear. There was a provision that required the highest and best use for property that was in the definitions sections, and that may have unnecessarily led to some recommendations on our part. I don't think it was controlling. In fact, we thought that was a good recommendation to take that out to give greater flexibility. We also defined in the new policy, the recommended policy, the public open space, those are city-owned property used for passive or active recreation, and it goes on to say shall not be considered for disposal through the surplus property process. We thought that was appropriate. We believed that to be consistent with our actions in the past, that we would not consider land that was normally considered park or passive park, that would simply be considered surplus and disposed of. And so those were kind of the major changes. I believe all of you have received an email earlier today from Carrie Litherland in support of these changes. They have taken some time. I think these kinds of policy changes do take time to make sure that you are not, again, making changes that have unintended consequences. There's a lot of history and background in these policies, and I'm very comfortable with the recommendation in front of you today. Again, Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter is here, and we're available if you have any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Excellent. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a question of the city manager and staff. Was there, was Kona or representatives from Kona invited to be a part of this discussion? Have they taken a position on this issue?
Commissioner, I'm going to ask Mr. Tetter to answer that.
Commissioner Richardson, we have not contacted Kona regarding this. Basically, how I viewed this, this was like standard practice of what we have been doing in the past regarding not considering active parks and recreation spaces for sale through our surplus property process. So no, sir, we did not contact them directly.
Okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I have some issues with that, in that they are still a functioning organization representing a significant number of neighborhoods in this community, and I think they should at least be given the opportunity to, whenever we are considering significant policy changes in this respect, they should be given the opportunity to have some input as well. I don't want them to feel that they have been neglected in this respect. So in the future, I would ask that we do reach out to Kona. If they don't have any input or prefer not to be involved, I at least want to give them, give them the opportunity to make that decision.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Point well taken. Other comments, motions?
Yeah, I mean, just a question. Yeah, I haven't heard from Kona on these issues at all, so I'd be interested to even know what they are up to and who all is involved and get their input. I just don't know, but it makes sense. If there's more people who want to give input, we should definitely hear it. And I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Matlow for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Mayor Protem, Commissioner Bryant, any comments?
No comments, sir.
Excellent. Mayor Protem?
I am sorry, little boy rang my doorbell. I went to see what he needed.
No worries.
Working at home. Where are we?
Yes, ma'am. We are on item number 11.03, and there is a motion on the table by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for staff's recommendation.
I confirm.
Excellent. Seeing no further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on 11.04. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to sell a one-quarter acre parcel of land in the Evening Rose Planned Unit Development. That's on the east side of town, approximately in the Mayhand Capital Circle Northeast area. This land was acquired many years ago as part of the PUD, and it's owned by the city. It is surrounded entirely by the Community Leadership Academy, which is a charter school in that neighborhood. They have expressed interest in buying the parcel. It was originally intended for affordable housing. Given its unique location and how it relates to the CLA property itself, we believe this makes sense to sell to that entity and then take the dollars that we would receive and put them in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They are willing to buy this property for $150,000. I think they're a very unique buyer. I understand that the appraisal may be in the neighborhood of $60,000. So this would be far above market value, but it represents a unique value to them, and we think it could enhance our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we know is in great need. So we recommend approval of this, and we seek your approval of staff option one.
Mr. Cook, any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we did receive one comment on this item. It was distributed and posted. I will also point out that this is where I believe the other item on 1102 applied, because that comment on 1102 referenced the Community Leadership Academy that the manager just referenced. But other than those two, no other comments were received after the cutoff.
Excellent.
Staff recommendation on option one, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Commissioner Richardson properly moved staff recommendation, option number one, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, the mayor, Protem. Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this piece of property was purchased for affordable housing, I think it is fitting and proper that any proceeds from it will be used for affordable housing. I think it's important for the community to hear that that's what it's going to be used for, and that we're not just ignoring the need for affordable housing in our community. So thank you, Mr. City Manager and staff, for making sure that those proceeds, which is a profit, by the way, will be going into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Point well taken, and thank you for reemphasizing that. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.05. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves a joint participation agreement, or JPA, commonly referred to, between the city of Tallahassee and the Department, Florida Department of Transportation. It is indicative of the strong partnership we have with the Florida Department of Transportation. Back in Jan, I'm sorry, back in December of 2019, you authorized a memorandum of understanding for a new JPA to transfer certain functions from the city back to the Department of Transportation, and then expand an arterial management program that's before you today. On net, it actually increases the amount of work that we will do on behalf of the Department of Transportation. This is relatively sophisticated work that our Transportation Management Center, located in the Public Safety Complex, is well suited to do. I'm pleased that Department of Transportation would have confidence in us to do that, and I think I'm very confident in our staff's ability. I like to thank Renetta Marshall and her team. They've done an excellent job working on the details of this, and we recommend your approval of option one.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Sure.
I take that as a no. All right, let's move into Commissioner. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Bryant, do you have any follow-up comments?
Second motion.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.06. Mr. City Manager?
This one, I'm very glad that the deputy city manager is going to do it. It's only appropriate now that all of us watching the news, there is a potential storm in the Atlantic prior to hurricane season, so it's absolutely appropriate.
Now talk about that, Reese. We're just gonna-
Take it back.
It's going to miss Florida altogether and just go northeast.
I think it is, but I will tell you, I'm glad that Cynthia Barber is on our team, because we are very prepared. And Cynthia's going to provide a presentation of our plans moving forward and offer for discussion. So I'll turn it over to Cynthia.
Ms. Barber, thank you so much.
Hi, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm trying to load my presentation here.
I didn't talk long enough, Cynthia.
You didn't talk long enough, it disappeared.
It disappeared.
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
While you're loading, and while we're talking about storm events, let me one more time just compliment our utility department for the amazing job they did with the latest storm event that came through. It looked like we had a tornado touchdown out there and tore up a bunch of our lines. And let me tell you, those men and women did an incredible, incredible job. And on a side note, and on an individual note, not too long ago, we had a vehicle overturned on Meridian Road in the middle of the day. It just so happened that one of our utility linemen who was off-duty stopped to assist this individual whose car got tangled up in some lines. Not only were they able to get the individual to safety, but he actually stayed there until, until help arrived. And it's just another example of our great utility workers going above and beyond.
and beyond. So with that, I thank you so much for the great department. Cynthia, we'll go back to you.
Cynthia, I think you've been muted.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Wow, I'm having to learn so much being, working from home and being quarantined. Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on the preparations we are taking for the upcoming hurricane season. You have a very comprehensive packet in front of you, so I won't go over the entire packet. I'll simply highlight some of those things that we are doing and providing you information on what we know about the current hurricane, the upcoming hurricane season. As you know, with all that we're dealing with, we're still only two weeks shy of the official hurricane season. The season starts on June 1st, and generally, all the activity occurs between June 1st and November 30th, at least 90 some odd percent of the activity. As a matter of fact, as we speak right now, we are monitoring a system that is in the Atlantic that appears to have some potential for development by this weekend into a tropical depression. While we don't anticipate that it will impact our community, we believe that it will mostly move out to the Atlantic. We know that these kinds of things can change very quickly, so we're monitoring it very closely, and we'll provide you an update, provide updates as quickly as we get them. Probably at no other time in our history have we faced such challenging times. We are not only dealing with the COVID pandemic, but on top of that, we are expected to have some type of impact, if not hurricane level, some type of tropical impact during the hurricane season. And what the purpose of today's update is to make sure that you're aware and the community is aware of those actions that we are taking to make sure not only that our organization is well-prepared for the upcoming storm season, but that our community is. We are having to make some adjustments to the way that we work in order to give, to give some, to give full consideration to making sure we're in compliance with the CDC's guidelines, because there's nothing more important than the safety of our employees and that of the public. So a lot of the activities that we are implementing are pretty similar to what we've done in the past, but we're having to figure out different ways to prevent them, to ensure that we maintain social distancing, and we protect our own staff as well as anybody that may come to our community to assist. As in the past, all of our city departments have a plan for their particular department and how they would work in the case of a storm. We have our continuity and operations plan, and you've seen that plan in play during this recent COVID pandemic. It's really very similar in terms of what, the way that we work. All essential services have continued to be provided, and it is our goal to continue to do that to the extent we can. Our utilities are very well-prepared. We are delivering training to our employees, but we're doing it in a way that protects them. We've provided it all online. Our IT department's work is very evident in the, even this meeting today, in the way that we have the capability of really achieving that kind of training, and we're using similar techniques with the public. The biggest impact that we see as it relates to interacting with the public is we won't be able to conduct the tight gatherings that we would have, that we would do with neighborhoods, particularly during the storm and recovery phases. So we are working in advance of any storm to make sure that our neighborhoods are well conducting planning in their own areas, they know what resources are needed within the community, they know what resources that they have, and they know how to tap into those. We're working with our community partners to figure out if there's a need for food and feedings and things that we've done in the past, that we would also do those in a way that would protect the, protect the safety of our employees and those who may need our services. Our electric utility, as you know, when I've talked to folks about preparation, one of the first things they ask us about is how well-prepared are our utilities. And you know, and it's important that for the public to know, that they are very well prepared. Our electric utility and our underground utility, as well as our waste management areas, those are among all of the other things that we do. Those are certainly some of our most critical services, that we try to make sure that we can continue to provide the service, and if it's interrupted, that it's restored as quickly as possible. So in terms of the electric utility, one of the biggest challenges that we face always is making sure we have enough resources to get the job done. We are working at this time, coordinating through FMEA, to make sure that we understand the impact of COVID on that process, and how do we make sure we get enough resources in place, but also that they're in place in a way that is consistent with CDC's guidelines and protect those workers as well as ours while they're here. The, in the underground utilities, they do something very similar. In addition to simulations for emergencies, they also are part of a coordinating group to identify additional resources as we would need them. Those resources would be also, would be necessary also to protect those resources while they are in the community. The remainder of the staff, the beautification group, the most critical piece is debris removal, making sure that our streets are safe for passage, and our utility, our department is working right now to make sure our contracts are in place, that we have enough resources. We've done a very good job in the way that we've managed the COVID staffing strategies to make sure we maintain enough and a healthy workforce, to make sure we have staff available to take care of those critical assignments. Those agreements, coming up with those debris agreements, is one of the procedures that they're working on right now. We, our supplemental staffing team, you know that the city manager has indicated that all staff are essential in the city's operations. So they've received training to provide all of those various functions. We've been able to achieve that training, although the majority of the staff is working in a telecommuting format, and we anticipate that many of them will continue to do that for some time. We're not certain of that time, because a lot of what we're dealing with is unpredictable, as you know, but we do have a strategy, and it has worked well, and we believe that we'll continue to be able to provide those services. It's really critically important that we coordinate with the Emergencies Operations Center and with the county. We have done that. We provide staff on a routine basis when there's no type of emergency or crisis, that coordinate with them and make sure that the appropriate training takes place. Then also, we usually participate in a process, you might recall the Build a Bucket event. We will not be, for obvious reasons, conducting the Build a Bucket in the traditional format, but we are coordinating with the county to distribute buckets to the elder care agency and other agencies that deal with, deal with our most vulnerable population to ensure that they have the resources that they need through a storm-type emergency. I've mentioned to you that one of the gaps we want to make sure doesn't occur is that we have neighborhoods that need resources, and they are not able to get those. Our Neighborhood Affairs Team is currently working with those neighborhood leaders. We will continue to hold online conversations with them in advance to make sure they've done their prep, which is their plan for readiness and emergency preparations within their neighborhoods, identified what gaps they believe the city can help, and how we can help do that in a safe way moving forward. So the bottom line, Commissioners, what I want you to know, what I want the public to know, is despite all the effort that we are putting in to make sure that we continue to provide services during this COVID pandemic, with the added concern of having storm activity, that their city and their city staff, under your leadership and that of the city manager, stand ready and prepared to assist our neighborhoods and our community, as well as our business partners, in ensuring that not only are we able to make it through a storm, but as we have demonstrated before, we have the ability to come through it and to recover and to thrive, and that's our goal again this year. Unless you have questions for me, I think I'll try to take the PowerPoint down.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Barber. This item does not require any action by staff recommendation, it's for discussion. So let's open it up for any questions. But first, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Comments, colleagues? Seeing none? I'll just simply say, hey, Cynthia, you and your team, keep up the great work. We certainly do appreciate it. We appreciate everybody in the City of Tallahassee family for their hard work, and according to my whiteboard, we have 19 days until hurricane season, so here we go.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, I want to thank Deputy City Manager Barber and her staff, while we're looking at COVID, they're looking at the hurricane season, because we got to have somebody with our, both of them, but we thank you for what you all are doing to make sure we're going to be as safe as possible.
Sounds great. Mayor Pro Tim, I think you just got Zoom-bombed in the back.
Yeah, you know, a coworker.
I love it. I love it. Well, all the families.
I couldn't speak earlier because the water was running.
I got you. I got you. I got you. Now, it's good to see everybody doing well. Good to see everybody. Any other comments? Any other questions? Okay, Mr. City Manager, thank you, Cynthia. Thanks, Ms. Barber. Certainly appreciate it. Let's move on to 11.07.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Cynthia. And the Mayor Pro Tim just made the connection, and I think it's appropriate. This next item involves a COVID-19 update. I think it's safe to say we're in the very early days of this pandemic. We've been at this for now, two months or more, adjusting as a community. I'm pleased with what we've been able to do with your leadership. I think we've persevered well as a community, but the threat is among us, and will last for some time, not weeks, certainly not days, but months and possibly years as we address this. So we want to keep you well-informed. It's a team effort. Christian Doolin on our team has compiled the report, but it does involve the entire organization, your leadership decisions we made, and how we're seeing this play out and what our plans are for the future. And so I'd like Christian to run down very briefly where we are today and answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, City Manager, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item gives a summary of all the actions the city has taken to date and our plan moving forward as we move through a phased reopening of our services and programs. As the manager noted, this was more a combination of all of the department's efforts, the item itself. The overarching goal remains the same, that's to protect the Tallahassee community, preserve our health and safety of our city staff, and also deliver the continued high-quality services to the area. Following the advice of local health and experts, and in line with the governor's order, as you know, last week, the city has begun to resume some activities and reopen those facilities and services on a gradual basis, as item details and under the terms detailed in the item, that included golf courses, tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, swimming pool. And those continued adjustments will be gradual, they will occur, and again, be based on our local healthcare professionals' advice and in conjunction with our partners and the governor's orders as well. Moving forward, we will be implementing new social distancing practices and other measures as a staff. Moving forward, we, those might remain in place for as long as necessary, could be months or longer, and of course, we will be supporting any efforts in our community to expand testing and tracing, to get back, to get back to some level of engagement that people are looking for. And finally, the impact of the pandemic is situational, and it has been and will continue to require flexibility and ingenuity on your part, our part, and the community's part to respond to the ongoing need. Staff is here to answer any questions you may have, and again, appreciate the opportunity to chat.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, you want to jump back in?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I could also add, and I think a part of our approach, which is so important, is good communication with our local partners, whether it's in our medical sector or whether it's in local government. That certainly is informative as we stay together and we coordinate, we talk to the hospitals frequently. I'm in direct communication with the county administrator to make sure we're synchronized, and then with your leadership to make sure that we're informing the community of those things we think we should be doing, the actions that we think we should take. This is clearly a global issue, but I think, Mr. Mayor, as you've said many times, we're a unique city, we have unique issues, and I think it's important that we share with our community those things that are important as we tackle this issue. And so I just wanted to underscore, the importance of the approach has to be fluid and flexible because it is situational, and we take our cues from our medical professionals, but we must be well-coordinated with others in our community and provide clear messaging and communication to our public. So thanks to Christian for compiling this, and we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment?
Mayor, we received one comment, which we did distribute to you. It addresses the item, but also makes reference to action that the city commission took along with the county as part of blueprint and funding, so I'd encourage you to keep an eye on that one as you look toward your next blueprint meeting.
Thank you. Let's open it up for any questions or comments. Commissioner Bryant, I saw your hand go up. Got you, Commissioner Richardson.
I would like to commend Christian and really the entire city staff for the job that they're doing, and to commend our community, because as we look at visions of people all across America that are thirsty to get outside and, I don't want to say be free, but we, our citizens have been following the rules that have been established, and really, they are to be commended for doing those things that have been recommended by our governor and by our city officials. So thank you, Christian, and thank you, staff, and thank you, community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, first of all, ditto Commissioner Bryant and her comments. I think we've done a wonderful job as a city in addressing the pandemic that apparently, of course, has hit everybody globally.
Mr. is off.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I don't think Commissioner Bryant can. Can you hear me, Commissioner Bryant?
I can't hear you, but keep going, Curtis.
And as a testament to that, I was at a food distribution with Second Harvest in the Orange Avenue Apartments today, and, you know, I took the mask, Mr. City Manager, to distribute them, but without fail, everyone that came for that food distribution was wearing a mask, and that's a testament to the message that we've gotten out to the community and how the community is responding in that respect. But I guess the question that I had, have we gotten any feedback either from the testing site at Northwood Center or at Florida A&amp;M University in terms of what they're seeing with respect to the virus here in our community and the persons that they've tested?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that, we have. We've gotten feedback, and actually, I'm so pleased of the work at the Florida A&amp;M testing site, and in fact, all of you know, they've increased the number of potential tests to 400 a day. Started out at 200, they've increased it to 400, and I know they're considerable, there's a considerable effort to try to keep that testing site for as long as possible. Now, the good news is, the percentage of positive results are going way down, and we're testing many, many more people, potentially 500 or so a day between those two sites, and that's, that's a giant increase from what we were doing just four weeks ago, which probably was about 100 a day. So the number of positives relative to the totals being tested is going down. I think that stands to reason. In fact, I think it's, it's very logical to think that the number of positives today should be near their lowest point because of what we've done as a community, and so that's the feedback we're getting. Now, we're staying really close in tune with our hospitals too, because I think they will see things before we may see test results in terms of hospitalizations and critical care situations, and that trend has been very positive. But what you have been saying, all of you have been saying- But what you, you have been saying, all of you have been saying is that, you know, let's not, let's not waste the sacrifice that got us to this point. So I think overall, to answer your question, that what we're hearing from the test sites is good. And we're trying to encourage that testing and support it in every way we can. And so the trends are positive in that regard.
Okay. Just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Mr. City Manager, are you comfortable with where we are and how we're moving forward based on what we're getting from the state level? Or do you think we need to come up with our own local plan for how we move forward?
Sir, thank you for that question. Our, clearly, our plans have to be coordinated with the state level, to some extent, the national plan.
Right.
And in clearly in cooperation with our local partners and local government and the medical sector. And I think that's what we've been intent on doing, staying connected with a phased approach that's based on, in part, what the state of Florida does, but also that fits our community. Now, as you know, what we, we've done over the last couple of weeks, we've been very careful not to get ahead of ourselves. In my opinion, I think we should be very deliberate. We should be very thoughtful. We should not be in a hurry to, if you will. I, I really don't like the term reopen. I think that's a mischaracterization. I think it sends the wrong connotation. But how we go about doing things we might have done otherwise. And so I think I'm comfortable in that regard. I appreciate your leadership, the leadership of the mayor commissioners not to rush things, because I think that could be detrimental. And I do believe our results have been reflected or reflective of good conduct, if you will, you know, good, good actions on our community. And so, so far, I'm comfortable. And the plan has to follow that. There is no timetable, though. I wish there was. I wish I could say on a certain date or within so many days, these things will happen. That's non-existent, and I think we all have to accept that part of the plan. But it, but our actions have to be in coordination with others.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Curtis. Commissioner Richardson, let, let me also jump in and say, I have been very impressed with the city manager's decision-making. It is all based on our local medical data. So, you know, the governor makes his decisions based on the state data, but he has even said that he recognizes all local governments and local communities are different. Before the city manager has made any decisions on how we are moving forward, he has always checked in with our local medical community, basically to get the thumbs up and say, do our numbers match what I would like to do at the city as we move forward? And if not, I, we, we won't move forward. So I felt very comfortable that every decision that Mr. Goad has made in regards to our tennis courts, our pools, how we operate internally, have all been backed and approved, quite frankly, by the local medical community. And I commend you for that, Reese. That, that's a smart move, and that's how we should be moving forward. Everything we do, we should check in with our medical community and say, this is what we're thinking? This is how we want to execute? Is this the right decision based on our local data?
Right.
And I'm glad that we're all on the same page. I am. Other questions, comments?
This is just a comment. I too am very pleased with how we are taking baby steps and making sure that people are paying attention. But one of the things that someone has brought to my attention is that as we're slowly opening these, these activities and we're having people to enforce that, you know, the social distancing, I've been asked to remind us that our parks and rec people are not law enforcement. And so, you know, we don't want to put them in danger when they go and try to tell somebody, you know, you need to do this, you need to do that. They need to be able to just call for enforcement and let enforcement come and take care of that. So I know that our parks and rec, I know Ashley's listening. I was, I was just asked to pass that on, and I'm passing it on, that we need to make sure that we don't send them out there. Because we, you know, we saw in one city where someone was actually killed for inquiring about wearing a mask to go into a store. So people are kind of on edge, you know, high alert, and it's just a tinderbox that's waiting to be, you know, ticked off. The other thing is that I too am very proud of my, my university and the work that they're doing in the community with the Bond Community Health Center. So glad that we have a walk-up site where you don't have to have symptoms, a doctor's note, a car appointment. You can make an appointment, but you don't have to have any of that. So I went last Wednesday to get tested along with, I ate, Dr. Davis went, and I took my husband back on Friday because he wanted to go. So it was, it's, it's a, it's a family affair. I'm happy to report that I did get my results back, and I am negative, which is what I expected. But I wanted to go, and I wanted to go and get this done. Hey, Jalen, how you doing? I wanted to go and get this done to lead my community, to show them that it was okay to come out and get tested. There's no, no stigma in that, and that it's better to be informed than to not be informed. So I'm glad that a lot of people reached out to me and said that they did go. And, and I must, must say that I, I went to that one because you're going to the throat and not to the nose. So, so going to the throat was an easier time for me than going to the nose. But at any rate, I'm just glad that I went, and I'm encouraging others to go as well, even if the public is listening, you need to go. As you heard, FAMU's site has been extended to the 21st, and they're now doing 400, they can do up to 400 per day. And Dr. Robinson, Dr. Larry Robinson, was there the day I went because the media was going to be there. And he said that they would like for Florida A&amp;M to become a permanent site. And I'm saying that so whoever's listening and can make that happen, that would be awesome because it is centrally located, is at an anchor in the south side. And we know that folks who need to get there can, can take TALTRAN, as long as they're wearing a mask, they can, they can get there. And so we're hoping that that will, will happen. So thank everybody for how this community has come together to make these things happen.
Before I go to Commissioner Bryant, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, I want to thank you for your leadership on this as well. You devised your own social media campaign, made it very public. And I know, Commissioner Bryant, you, you followed as well by going to get tested. I think you brought a lot of comfort to people that were a little nervous about getting tested, and I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate. I want you to know that I am going to go get tested, and I'm going to schedule an appointment and go down there. Same thing, I don't think I have it, but just to, just to set the example. But you were the first to do it. Commissioner Bryant, you were the second to do it. Some of our colleagues over at the county have also gone, you know, based on what you've done. I appreciate, we all have a role to play, and you filled that role perfectly, and we appreciate that.
It was my pleasure.
When I found out that Commissioner Williams Cox had gone, I said to myself, well, if she went, I guess I can go too. So I went the next day, and I'm, I'm hoping that other people will do likewise, that we, we need the data for sure.
I agree. I agree. Commissioner Matlow, comments?
Yeah, I want to just echo some of the comments. And, you know, I think we, we've been communicating well with, with the public of, of what to expect and to continue distancing, continue to wear masks. I think as things from the state level slowly start to reopen or open up or the guidelines change, there will be some confusion, especially from people who are out and about. You mentioned parks and recs. I think a lot of local businesses are also having to put in their own regulations and having issues come up from time to time. And I think we just need to go, continue to encourage the public to know that this is still serious, to obey by any regulations that barber shops, restaurants, or what have you put into place to protect their staff and, and their customers. I've seen some disgruntled customers on, on social media who didn't think, who thought that with a cough, they should still be allowed into certain establishments and that sort of thing. So we, we need to continue messaging that this isn't over. We're fortunate in our community that we haven't had really an outbreak, but until there's an all-clear, I mean, we're still on, on high alert, and this could pop off at any moment. I think we just need to continue to let the community know that, so they don't let their guard down and think things are more, more safe than they may be. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing? One more thing?
Of course, I am.
The city of Tallahassee was forward in, forward-thinking to partner up with a local company to make 25,000 masks. And let me tell you, I put myself in the mix, and I was busy for a period of time forwarding email requests for masks. I don't know, I know Commissioner Richardson gave out some, I know Commissioner Bryant gave out some, and I'm sure you and Commissioner Matlow. Let me tell you, there was a great demand for those masks, and somebody put it in the Nextdoor app. They thought I put it in the Nextdoor app, that they could get masks. And so folks were emailing me, and I asked them to please update the Nextdoor app because we were out of masks. But there's still a great need for it, and I listened to the county commission meeting yesterday, and I heard them talk about masks. So I'm hoping that perhaps they will be able to help supply masks as well. Because we did not limit it to just city of Tallahassee residents. We sent it to wherever they lived, in Leon County. And we didn't put them in the mail. Our staff drove to their homes and took it to them because our city manager said he did not want a gathering to occur to get those masks. So I filed requests to his, his office and to him in his office, and they had people drive around all over Leon County to give out masks. He had requests from other places, but he had to take care of our residents here first. So I'm hoping that the county will join us in, in this mass distribution and pick up where we left off.
Thank you. Absolutely. Final comments, I'll just chime in and say, I've been very impressed, Mr. Goad, with, with, with the operations and how you've been able to move forward. And it brings great comfort to know that every decision that you are making is based upon our local medical data and that, that we check in every day, we stay in touch with everybody. And quite honestly, I appreciate all my colleagues in setting the example. We do have a lot to be proud of. It is a long haul. We are in it for the long term. In fact, I think our message should be, stay strong, Tallahassee, be smart, wear your mask, social distance, we can't let down our guard. One of my concerns is that society begins to relax, and as a result, we have spikes because people aren't following the CDC guidelines. Mr. Manager, your reverse quarantine program at the utility department, along with our focus priority of the continuity of municipal services and health, safety, and welfare, was internationally recognized. That's impressive. Our program, colleagues, that we put together with the county commission through the IA for small business grant program, I actually heard from U.S. Senator Marco Rubio's office that, what a great idea and great job. You know, the Florida League of Cities picked up on our partnership with TMH with one of the first draft and collection facilities in the state of Florida. It is now marketed as a best practice, and we have other local governments across the state contacting us, asking us how we did it. FAMU has set the record straight on how to do a walk-up facility and do it right. People are looking at Tallahassee and how we have been able to move forward. We don't always get it right. These are difficult times. We don't have all the answers, but boy, we sure are trying, and we're doing a good job. And I'm real proud of everybody, and I'm real proud of the city of Tallahassee family. Mr. Manager, you do have on this item an option to, to accept the update. Do you need a vote on this? Do you, do you want a motion to accept the update? We didn't do it for the hurricane report, or, or are we good legally?
Mr. Mayor, we have no legal requirement, maybe good form, just to accept it, to acknowledge the report?
Actually, if we could do a motion to accept both reports, the hurricane report and this report, I think that would be in order. Mayor Pro Tim, will you sponsor that motion, please?
So, so moved.
Okay. And Commissioner Bryant will second it. Any further comment on the motion on the table? Seen none? It passes unanimously. Do we have any other business to come before us right now, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. We do have a public hearing at 5:00. It's 4:25. I, I'm looking at my colleagues. Would you like to take a 30-minute break and come back for the public hearing? Or would you like to go ahead and do the sharing of ideas right now and then take a quick break and come back for the public hearing? I'm open. What would you, what's the will of the board?
I'll take a break.
Okay. Well, we go, we'll take a break, we'll come back at 5:00. So let me remind you, if you don't mind, please mute your microphone and close off your video camera. The city of Tallahassee will put up a screen on TV, but go ahead and mute your microphone. Do not log off, just mute the microphone and go ahead and mute your camera, and we'll come back at 5:00. We stand in recess. Commissioner Bryant's here, Commissioner Richardson's here, is the Mayor Pro Tim back with us, and Commissioner Matlow?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir.
Great. We have everybody. We have three items on the public hearing. We have 13.01, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So item number 13.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-18, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, with, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Excellent. It has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seen none? All those in favor, seen five, I say aye? All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.02 is the second and final public hearing on canopy, on the canopy development agreement. This matter is before the city commission for consideration of the proposed second amended and restated canopy development agreement. An amendment to the PUD, ordinance number 20-Z-04, is proposed for approval in coordination with this second amendment. The second amendment reflects the land use changes in the PUD and reflects changes to the concurrency impacts resulting from the land use changes. It further provides concurrency credit to the developer for traffic improvements, which include the construction of a portion of the, of Willany Boulevard and sidewalks. We can have the clerk determine whether or not we've had comments on this item.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have any proposed comments to be entered into the record on 13.02?
Mayor, we did have one comment submitted. That item was included in the information that was distributed to the city commission and posted for the public, and we have received nothing since.
Excellent. This is a quasi-judicial. Before we open it up for questions or anything, let me announce on the record that I received a phone call on Friday, May 8th, from Mr. Ron LaFace Jr., who is a trustee with the Holy Comforter School, calling to thank on behalf of Holy Comforter the fine work that staff did, allowing them to participate as well. And that Holy Comforter is fully in support of the staff recommendation. Madam Attorney, I will be sure to fill out appropriate paperwork as a quasi-judicial.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Okay. Let's open it up for any questions, discussions, motions.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, seeing five, I say aye? All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 13.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-0488, proposed major amendments to the Canopy Plan Unit Development Concept Plan, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Canopy Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, provided for severability, and provided an effective date. The proposed ordinance reflects an application for an amendment to the existing Canopy PUD, located on approximately 505 acres in the western half of Willany, Toh, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fleishman Lane and Centerville Road. The amendment proposes several changes, which include increasing the maximum number of residential units, establishing a non-residential square footage development target, clarifying inclusionary housing requirements, removing the neighborhood center district and creating a new town center district, relocating the, the city senior center, removing the requirement of Leon County school site, increasing the building height of multifamily residential in the high-density multifamily residential district, adding RV boat storage as an ancillary use to be, to a designated area, and revising the general land use, vehicle circulation, and bike and pedestrian and revising the general land use, vehicle circulation and bike and pedestrian circulation plans. I'll ask the clerk if there have been any comments sent in regarding this item.
Mr. Clerk, any comments on this item?
Mayor, we did receive one comment on the item. It was distributed to the members of the city commission and posted for the public. We've received no comments since that single item was received.
Excellent. Madam Attorney, I misspoke. It was not 13.02, it was 13.03, which I received a phone call from Mr. LaFace in regards as a trustee for Holy Comforter in support of, of our action. So I apologize. I will make sure that the, the paperwork that I file accurately, accurately reflects 13.03.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any comments, motions, discussion, colleagues?
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney, do we have anything else to come before us at the public hearing?
No more public hearings.
Excellent. All right. Let's get to the sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tim, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I have one item tonight. I just want to wish our, this Annette Thorpe will be turning 100 years old on the 17th. And there will be a, a parade for her over at, I believe it's Harbor Chase is where she resides now. But she also, her family maintains her house over here on the South Side on Lincoln Street. And so we want to wish her a happy, happy 100th birthday. And she is, if, if you know her, you know how regal and beautiful she is even at 100. She is definitely a ladies lady. And so we want to wish her a happy birthday. It does, it's not every day that you turn 100. And so we want to just pause and say happy birthday to our, that's, that's a centurion, right? When you turn 100?
Yes.
I think that's the term to our newest centurion in Tallahassee. That's it for me.
Isn't that your soror?
Well, yeah, I wasn't going to mention it, but yes, yes, she is. The sorority is only 12 years older than she is.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow. That's fantastic. Well, thank you. Commissioner Bryant, any comments, sharing of ideas?
No idea to share other than, but I cannot thank our city manager and staff for the great job they've done. And I'll continue to support and offer accolades as, as they actually go beyond the call of duty to make sure that we are prepared, especially as hurricane season approaches, in, in addition to our response and proactiveness to COVID-19. So thank you, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. For the city manager, one of my neighbors is a military veteran. And he asked me yesterday if we have any discounts or, or free admission for veterans to any of our parks and recreation activities where a fee is incurred? For instance, for swimming, maybe golf? Do we have any discounts or is it free admission for military veterans for those activities, Mr. City Manager?
Commissioner Richardson, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Let me find out.
Okay.
Certainly seems appropriate if we don't. And I'm glad you brought it to my attention. I'll make sure I get all of you that information.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Lastly, I was excited. I got an email from the president of the Florida Education Association asking me to serve on a task force to develop recommendations for opening schools.
That's great.
I was astounded. I didn't expect it at all, but I'm looking forward to serving on that task force.
Commissioner Richardson, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. What a great idea regarding our veterans. So look forward to getting that information back. And if we don't have anything in place, show us the lead and let's put something together.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I had.
All right. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
First, uh, thank you. A group of citizens has continued to working on trying to save the old schoolhouse in the Northeast. They're still considering different vessels or what makes the most sense. And they asked if, now they're considering exploring a nonprofit or seeing if the city wanted to take any type of active role in helping preserve that. So I just wanted to throw it out there and see if there was any interest and, and how the city may want to engage or, or direct them to different paths.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner? Mr. Manager, you want to weigh in?
I'd just acknowledge, we could certainly follow up again. I'm, I'm a little rusty on the details of it. I know the county was talking to some involved. We'll be happy to engage and offer resources as appropriate and, and explore the issue further.
Excellent.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Just, just get some update on, on the progress and, and anywhere we can direct them. If it's through us or through somebody else, I think that'd be helpful. The second thing, they're, they're, the county commission's had, had some somewhat bizarre conversations over the last couple of meetings. You know, the city of Tallahassee has always been a leader in public participation and citizen input and that sort of thing. Recently, the county voted to postpone the May 26 meeting till it can be in person. Like many of you, I've been hearing from a lot of constituents that would like to engage on that issue and, and don't feel the platform we're currently using really gives them that opportunity. So the county voted to postpone it and then, and for, for whatever reason, the chair at the last minute reconsidered his decision and wanted to push it forward and just do it virtually. And then today, I received an email and the chair also wanted to request that we stack our blueprint meeting immediately before it. And the judge seems we're getting to a point where this is going to be too overwhelming for the public to really engage. I think the city has always been, been again, the leader in saying, we may not vote the way you want us to vote, but we will listen to you. And I, I don't see any harm in, in delaying this so the public can vet the decision and feel like they were a part of it on a decision that's going to have implications for the next 20 years. I think it would be appropriate to say, no matter what the final decision is, yes, we want you to be able to engage in person on, on, on these really important decisions. So I would make a motion that we reschedule the April meeting that got rescheduled to May, reschedule it one more time till we can meet in person.
Motion on table. Is there a second to the motion? As for lack of a second, Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
And yeah, the last thing I just want to say is that we kind of touched on it earlier in the COVID-19 conversations. Just stay diligent, keep wearing your mask and go get tested. Also, we talked a lot about the testing at Bragg, but there's also private testing, antibody testing being done around the community. If you feel like you, you may have been exposed previously or you had a known that that might have been it and you want to go see if you have antibodies built up for it that's available in Tallahassee as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Matlow, I was listening to the county commission meeting yesterday with Claudia Blackburn from the health department. And I think Commissioner Minor asked her about if that was something that they wanted to recommend to the community about antibody testing. And if I understood her correctly, she, they're not advising that at this time. So we might want to, you know, just recheck that because I, I wouldn't want to put wrong information out there. But I thought that's what she, when she was asked that yesterday, she was not recommending that at this, at this time.
I'm not sure on that particular point. I'm just, you know, letting people know that it is available in our community. And if they want, if they want to have that information for themselves, it's out there.
Okay. And one, one other thing, if I could, I could speak to the motion that just failed. We, I think that you, you're right. No, I don't think, I know you're right. The city is a leader. We've led in having citizens engagement. We've gone into the community for meetings. I'm available by phone or whatever, smoke signal, however. People who want to engage, they engage in a grocery store, wherever. I knew that when I got elected. So I am available and I've said as many times, I'm available. Not, you don't have to come to city hall to see me. You can see me wherever. I'm not going to let you in the house right now, but you can call me on the phone. So I, I believe that I am as accessible and I hope that you all are too, as I would be if I was at city hall taking, taking meetings. I'm doing community conference calls. I'm doing one tomorrow, I forgot to mention that, around the coronavirus. And we're doing this one on upcoming elections. Mark Early is going to come and talk to our community about elections because we've got to think about those things as well. So I, I want those who may be listening to know that I am as accessible as, as I can be. People send me personal emails, they send me emails at work. You know, I don't know what else I can do other than send out a school pigeon. So we are, I believe, as available as we can be in keeping our residents safe. That's, that's what's really important. We got to keep them safe. And I, I don't know what else we can do because we can't gather yet. We don't know whether that's going to be next week, two weeks from now, two months from now. But whenever it is, we, we have to keep moving to, to, to keep our city moving. We didn't, no one was concerned about having this kind of input when we were talking about putting a million dollars out there for small businesses, a million dollars out there for nonprofits. We do have to do those things to keep moving. So I hope our residents appreciate the fact that we're not stymying and we're not standing still. We're still trying to keep our city moving forward so that when we come through this thing, we are going to be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow, any other comments?
I know that'll be all.
Great. I only have two things. First of all, tomorrow, we will be streaming on the same platform, a mayor chair, chair meeting. Please tune in. It's at 10:30 tomorrow morning. And finally, Diane, you are always wonderful and happy belated Mother's Day as well to you and Diane and to all the mothers out in our community. That, you, you, you always remember the holidays and thank you for the email. And that was very sweet and I passed it on to Jen. With that, there's no other business to come before the city commission. We stand adjourned. Everybody be safe.